If I could ask Clerk Segras to take the role.
All right, Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segras is present. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
Hello, I'm back.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Could we call for, or I'd like to call for, a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
So moved.
I'm, okay. Thank you, guys. I think we've captured that. Those in favor of a motion as sort of presented, say it aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say none. Motion carries. As I stated, this is probably one of the most anticipated study sessions we've had in Canton Township in a very long time, and I appreciate the faces in the audience here, as well as representatives that we have with us from SEMCOG, the state of Michigan, MDOT, and Wayne County. With that being said, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Bill, if you could lead us, and we have a PowerPoint presentation. We are, I don't see Wayne County, sir, are you representing Wayne County? Okay, so we've got a quorum. We've got everybody here. They've got the big pieces here. That's what matters. So please, with that being said, go right ahead.
Good evening. I'm Bill Surcheck, Township Engineer. Thank you all for attending. We have, we set this up a couple of months ago, and we wanted to answer questions from our board regarding Canton Roads, everything related to roads and how they work in the township and in the county. We have several representatives here from different organizations. I'll introduce who's here right now. Carmine Palumbo is with Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and he handles a lot of the transportation issues that we deal with every day. Goretty Young is the head of the local MDOT Transportation Service Center. Your area of jurisdiction is everything in Western Wayne County. So she has a staff down in Taylor that deals with everything related to the state highways, 275, Ford, and Michigan Avenue being the ones that run through Canton. And we have Bill Bantam, who is the Director of Roads for Wayne County, and we have hopefully two others from Wayne County that are probably on their way. So I'm going to run through the PowerPoint, and our format really is very open. The PowerPoint will just be a guide for questions from our board. Our primary focus is to answer questions from our Township Board regarding how roads work, and at the end, we're going to talk a little bit about a Roads Task Force that the Township Board is setting up. We have several representatives of the Roads Task Force here. Jim Castillo is right here, and Tom Casari, my predecessor at Canton Township, is also here. And I believe we have a few other members who are going to be joining that board. We don't have a time set up for that first board meeting, but that will be our kickoff, and then hopefully it will be a successful time where we brainstorm and come up with ideas on how to deal with Canton's roads. So I'm going to start, I'm going to run through the PowerPoint and give a little background on each of these items, and I really want everyone to just use it as an open forum, and especially our board, we want to have questions as they come up. So I will, I will run through these, if I can do this right. All right, here we go. Okay. So, our brief agenda tonight is the following topics: Who owns what? How have roads been funded in the past? How are they funded today? Looking at prioritization of how we fix roads. And then we're going to touch on the unique challenges to Canton. And then at the end, we're going to talk a little bit about the Canton Roads Advisory Task Force that we've been kind of assembling with Pat Williams and the Board. I think right now there's somewhere between 15 and 20 members on that task force, and future meetings will be set up for that group. So, to start, I will just touch on what our road network looks like. We have about 410 miles of road growing every day. Yes?
Does that include residential subdivision homeowners associations?
Yes, yes. In fact, we've broken it down here. By the end of this year, we'll probably have another three or four miles that are, this year, I think we're probably, we've probably built about 10 or 12 miles this year in the new developments.
Is there a copy of this, or is this PowerPoint available?
We can post this on our website this week, so yeah.
No, you have to make the copy after tonight.
We'll make this available through our website. We can post that. We've got about 5.4 miles of state highway, basically 275, Ford Road, and Michigan Avenue, which Goretty and her office take care of. We've got 65.1% owned by Wayne County. That includes your mile roads, Hagerty-Lilly, Warren-Palmer, Cherry Hill, and it also includes all of the subdivision roads, the public subdivisions, and we'll get into a bit more detail on those. Then we have almost 30%, 29.5% are private roads that are owned by homeowner associations, either multifamily or single family. We're a chartered township, and by state law, townships don't own roads. We are, we work with the road agencies, MDOT and Wayne County, on their projects, and that is really one of the key differences, if not the key difference, between a city and a township. So, let me move on here. Okay, so the state highways, I jumped ahead. As you know, Ford Road, M153, and Michigan Avenue, US 12, are our primary routes east-west. 275, we have a piece of, as it runs north-south. Road projects on the state highways are determined by MDOT, and they have a five-year plan for construction and reconstruction, and also an annual maintenance program. I don't know if you want to touch on anything this year that we have in the township. I think we have some work on 275 next year that's going on, and we have some intersection and signal improvements going on on Michigan Avenue this year. Those are the two major projects for MDOT. We'll move on to how we work with MDOT. We've participated in quite a few MDOT projects over the years. The last big project that we partnered with MDOT on was the improvements in 2015 to the area near Ford and 275. In particular, we worked with MDOT on those bike and pedestrian pathways that go under the 275 highway. I think the only thing that was necessary from us was the, we paid for the railings on the, on the north side of Ford Road. That was, was an important project because it brought, it brought those pedestrian facilities east-west, which, if you recall, there were what we called goat trails in that area. There were a lot of people that went under 275. So getting those, most people think of roads, but we also have to think of the pedestrian access. That was, that was a big win for us to get that east-west traffic for bikes and pedestrians under 275. So I will, I will move on to Ford Road in particular. We want to touch on Ford Road and the studies that have been done. As you probably know, Ford Road and Hagerty, Ford Road and Lilly are some of the highest crash locations in Southeast Michigan. In 2013, we worked with Wayne County, MDOT, SEMCOG, and the Federal Highway Administration, and completed a, quite a comprehensive traffic and environmental study of the Ford Road corridor. We looked at it from the Westland border all the way to Canton Center. We looked at many alternatives to address congestion in that area. How do we deal with the left turns on Hagerty and Ford, all areas that I'm sure you're familiar with? And in addition, a lot of, a lot of crash, crashes that occur in that corridor. It was about a year, a little over a year, to complete that study, and it did result in a path forward, and we're going to talk a little more about that. And it was, it is, it is a, it is a project that has been conceived, but it has not been funded. So, when we ended up in 2013, we looked to address the operational issues and safety issues along that corridor. Some of the issues we talked about in our, in our year-long evaluation included looking at the options of trying to put additional interchanges at Warren and Cherry Hill, something that had been talked about for years. We actually determined that neither of those would be feasible or possible, nor would those options address the key issues at Hagerty and Ford, probably the most important intersection in that study. What we eventually came up with was a boulevard option. It is a unique idea. It includes essentially creating Michigan, Michigan lefts. As you see on Michigan Avenue, we have the classic turnaround, and that eliminates the left turns directly at the intersection. This is a small map here that is representative of the area from Hagerty to Lilly, I believe. And one thing I would encourage you to look at, we're going to put this PowerPoint on our website, but we have the whole, we've applied for several grants in the past years to try to fund this, and those are also available on our website. The grant application is about 40 pages, and it provides quite a bit of detail on how this project would, would be funded and how it would be constructed. If you think of Ford Road, it doesn't immediately lend itself to a Michigan left, the turnaround. It doesn't have the large expanse that we have on Michigan Avenue, or that you see on many other roads around here. But there is a way to do it. So I encourage you to look at our website and find that study. We're going to-
Semi-trucks would be able to-
Semi-trucks would be able to make those turns. Yes, yes. It's, it's a unique form of boulevard and a unique form of a crossover at those turns, but it is doable.
Bill, I think the, I think that the township applied for federal funds out of a, what's called a Tiger Grant, seven, seven years in a row, I think. I think there's seven years of Tiger. I think the township might have been six or seven, every year applied, but unfortunately we haven't, haven't found the right approach yet, I guess, in order to, to get some funding.
Yeah. The boulevard plan, yeah, we did. We applied, I think, seven times the last-
Very aggressive, I think, more so than any other community in trying to get some money for that program.
Yeah, and we're, when we made those applications, we weren't just working on a theory. We had a real study that had been blessed by MDOT and agreed upon by all the agencies, including the Federal Highway Administration, which was very important. The estimated cost right now, little over $40 million, is, is about what we need. That includes land acquisition, engineering, and ultimately, construction. I say in my PowerPoint, although we've been unsuccessful, we do know what that type of a project, a boulevard, would, would do. It would result in a 35% reduction in crashes, and we would get a return on that $40 million in eight to nine years. So we're going to still pursue that. The, the study is still out there. There are certainly other funding opportunities. It has been placed on the Regional Transportation Plan, which is a region-wide plan that SEMCOG oversees, and we're going to talk a little bit more about the different funding mechanisms as we move forward. But it's not a pie-in-the-sky idea. It's, it's, it's been studied, and we have a, we have some initial plans, we just don't have the money.
Bill, you mentioned it's on the state's projected projects out in the future. Do we know what page number or item number of the state projects? Because in terms of SEMCOG projects, I didn't see it in a five-year projected plan at this point, so how deep are we in the priorities?
It's, it's in our long-range transportation plan. It's a 20-year plan. The problem, Supervisor, is that it's not in our tip, our four-year program, because we can only put projects in that program for which funding has been identified.
Four years.
So it's, it's outside of four years as a result of that.
It is a priority for a state. It simply doesn't have funding, therefore it is not on any of the formal prioritize lists.
Correct.
Got it.
Bill, I have a question. I looked at one of the studies that we did for Ford Road, and I can't remember exactly which one, but it said that Ford Road was going to reach capacity in about 2011. So I assume that has happened, and so is there anything that, so how far are we outside of capacity for?
Any thoughts on that, Goretty? Are we outside of capacity? Is that a valid statement?
I believe, so based on our study in 2013, Ford Road at peak hours was functioning in Level Service E, which is at capacity at the time. Since then, we have done the operation improvements that Bill mentioned. So we connect the turn lanes nearby to 275 to help the flow. We also treat some of the signal timing to help the operation during the peak hours. So based on the study and the traffic counts that we have done recently, we believe that it's still hovering around Level Service D and E, which is close to capacity during peak hours. Our hope is with the operation improvements that we have done two years ago, will last us two, when we can find the funding to do the boulevard for a longer-term fix. So that was slated out as details in the study. Lot's Road paving is also one of the projects stemming from the study as the operation improvements to help the area as a whole. So we're working together from Wayne County and all of our partners in SEMCOG, Federal Highway, and the Township to make sure that we're all doing our parts to help the traffic flow in the area. So hopefully, we won't get to the capacity soon.
Signal timing, that's not, that's done manually, correct? I mean, those, they're Hawk traffic lights that can be used in a connected way, but right now it's being done manually?
Quite a few years ago, Canton has worked with DTE and us to interconnect all the signals along Ford Road. They are, they're modernized to be able to talk to each other, and there are sensors along the way, so they are actually smart technology that they will change the signal timing based on the traffic flow.
And that's in operation? Okay. Thanks.
So, let me touch a little bit on our study that we did. We worked with Wayne County, and we also included representatives from our Downtown Development Authority. We held four public meetings in 2012 and 2013. Certainly, some of you had attended those, and we, we looked at these different alternatives: no build, of course, any federal evaluation, you're going to look at the do-nothing option. That's very typical. We looked at just simple operational improvements, some of which we were able to implement, MDOT was able to implement, in 2015. The boulevard option was ultimately what we selected, and we did look at the opportunities to do additional interchanges, like I said, at Cherry Hill and Warren. Those were two improvements that had sort of been talked about over the years, and we essentially put those to bed. They're not, they're not able to be done for a variety of reasons. Alternative four up here, the Western Wayne Transportation Improvement Study, was a study done, I believe, in, was it around 2004? I'm looking at Tom. I think it was, it was quite a while ago.
Around that time.
And there were a number of other, if you go back into looking at those, I think they were planning level, very high-level studies. There were alternatives looked at, of actually working on the interchange itself and doing some unusual constructions to move traffic away from the Ford and Hagerty intersection. So we, not only did we look at new ideas like the boulevard, but we looked at some of those historical ideas that had been floated in the township for many years, long before I got here. They were talking about, why don't we have an interchange at Warren, and why don't we have one at Cherry Hill? So that's an idea. This slide really shows what was presented to the public, and we had a pretty good public response. We had 80 to 100 people, I think, at each of the meetings. We held them at the summit. We, as we, as we worked through those public comments, they were very valuable to the group as we did our study. So I wanted everyone to understand that it was a very comprehensive look at that corridor, and, you know, I'm, I, I was very pleased with the outcome in looking at a boulevard. As I said, now we're, we're just moving forward to try to find a way to fund, fund that.
Bill?
Yes?
One of those options that I think we discussed back then was offloading some of the traffic from the ramp right onto Hagerty Road. And I was just wondering, you mentioned that Warren and Cherry Hill were not a possibility, but is that still an open possibility that if we had the funding, we could look at doing that?
We did look at, I think you're talking about the idea of what they called a, well, it was, it was a direct connection to Hagerty through what is right now the IKEA Eastern parking lot. And what, one thing we found in that study, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that that operation would still not alleviate the issues at Hagerty and Ford, which is the critical location there. And I don't, I think there were other reasons you might want to touch on.
That study was actually a very unique study. It was highly funded. It's one of the more expensive study, which intended to address more issues. It's a planning environmental linkage study intended to help us achieve to the conclusion faster, answering some of the environmental issues along with traffic operation issues at the same time. So that's why, partly because of that type of study will give us a more comprehensive look. As part of the more comprehensive look, we look into the interchange at the location. One of the options, I believe, is the Western Wayne Study. It's the one that you're referring to with the slip ramp option that goes basically right at the parking lot owned by IKEA across the street. That one, in addition to some of the environmental concern, some of the operation concern that didn't solve the traffic issues that we have on Ford Road at Hagerty, in addition to that, Federal Highway has a concern about that slip ramp. They have many experience over the country, everywhere in the nation, where that type of ramps has safety concern, because it's very short, very sharp, and people turn out and has to stop right away, and this makes a lot of concerns of safety. So they have been taking those kind of ramps out of different system all over the country. So they basically, we went to, all the way to Washington to ask them for an understanding, and they basically clearly answer us that since they have been taken out from other places, they're not going to fund to put it one in.
Thank you. That does help. And we don't have the study in front of us, or the model that we saw 10 years ago, the graphic model, but I guess I'll just say that I still have a concern that even if we did boulevards, that section from the exits, exiting southbound and going west, that that piece of it to that light, I'm not sure what offloads the traffic right there and backing up that light right there, especially now that we have the longer turn lane. But, you know, that's something to be modeled if we ever get to that point, I'm sure.
Actually did a lot of modeling as part of the study, and if you go to the MDOT website, and I can send you the link, we put all the information, including the simulation model as a video, on the website, and you can see the different options on there.
Okay, so you can see a difference with the slip versus not with the slip? Okay.
Did an extensive level of surface on each movements also.
Any, any more questions on the Ford Road Boulevard, and we'll move on. So let's jump over to, again, we're on road jurisdiction. Let's talk a little bit about the Wayne County primary roads. Primary roads, I think it's easiest for a layperson to think of those as the mile roads and the half-mile roads. The whole Southeast Michigan is generally laid out with those mile roads. Reconstruction and any other major projects on the county primary roads are generally funded through federal and state gas tax funds that flow through Wayne County. Let's touch on, touch on that a little more. The perfect timing, Ron. We're just starting to touch on, on county roads. Ron Agosinski is the County Highway Engineer. Good to see you.
Thank you.
As far as the primary roads, Canton has participated in some projects on the county primary roads. The most recent examples are the Sheldon Center reconstruction in 2015, which widened that road and realigned the Sheldon, I think it's the Sheldon Connector, right from Sheldon Road, and I believe we added that, we improved that light, that signal right there. We participated in that. Also, going back to 2011, the Canton Center reconstruction, which was from Cherry Hill down to Past Palmer, the full mile reconstruct right in front of our building here. Those, those are probably the two most recent projects we've participated in. Aside from gas tax funding, which comes from the federal and state gas tax, we had a unique project in 2016. I'm sure you'll remember the Lot's Road paving project last year between Cherry Hill and Ford. That was a $5 million grant from the state. It was not gas tax funds. It was excess funds, if I recall, that came directly from the state legislature. So as Carmine and Goretty mentioned, that paving of Lot's Road was something we looked at in the Ford Road study. It certainly changed the traffic patterns around there. A lot of westbound traffic on Cherry Hill that had previously gone to Hagerty and straight north now takes Lot's Road directly to the intersection of Lot's and Ford as a, as a way to access not only the commercial, but the, get on the highway. So that, those traffic patterns changed almost immediately once that road was paved. So the, aside from the primary roads, the subdivision roads, as they're called Wayne County juris, local roads, are, are also owned by Wayne County. That includes some half-mile roads. For instance, portions of Salts Road, portions of Hanford Road are considered local, and the roads within the subdivisions, which are, the, the majority of roads in the township are the subdivision roads. Maintenance for county local roads are, again, generally funded through the state gas tax, paid to Wayne County, and based on complaint, repairs of county local roads- paid to Wayne County, and based on complaint, repairs of county local roads sometimes are funded through that, through that gas tax also. Sure.
Does the county have official titles for those different roads relative to whether or not they're major, minor, arterials? Is there, so that, you mentioned, Bill, that in some cases, some parts of Salts is considered a local versus, what's Warren Road, for example, is labeled as a county road, is it county major, county arterial? What's the classification system that's used by the county hierarchy?
You're talking about two different systems at the moment. You're talking about arterials and collectors and stuff like that, that's the national functional classification. The federal highway administration has decided on a hierarchy of roads, and they wanted us to follow that hierarchy because they want travel from one end of the country to the other to be consistent, so that you're traveling on the same types of roads if you want to go from, from one destination to another, or from a big destination to a big destination, or a small destination to a small destination. So they came up with arterials, collectors, minor arterials, and that is an indication of federal funding availability. You have to be a, Carmine is it the, you have to be a major arterial to be funded by the federal gas tax. Well, but also what we have is, in the state of Michigan, we have county primary and county local roads. County primary roads are a higher classification of the road, which get more attention than the county local roads. The county local roads include some major roads, industrial subdivisions and residential roads for those marked.
Short answer, Jim, is there is, and the county gets funding from the state based on, in part, based on the classification of the roads.
I'm hearing two, it sounds like there's two distinct classifications, county primary and county local.
Correct.
I think when we get into the Roads Task Force, we'll, we'll provide some more of that level of detail with the different classification systems. That's, that's, that's a good question.
For my purposes, what it's meant in the last couple of years is, does Wayne County take care of snowplow on the primary? Yes. Local, sometimes if Canton subsidizes that to prioritize, elevate it on the priority list. And we are working on Salts Road specifically. You've got schools along Salts Road, still considered a local road, which is a problem for snow plowing, so I've asked that we in Canton Township begin to subsidize that until it can be reidentified more appropriately as a primary road for, for both the benefit of Wayne County and Canton.
May it be of service for, for this coming snow and ice season, that Salts Road has been added.
Thank you, sir.
That's Salts Road between Canton Center and Sheldon, I believe.
Canton Center and Sheldon, oh, it's the Canton Center and Ridge. No, Canton Center and Ridge was already in place, and I think you're extending it to Sheldon.
Extending it to Sheldon, right, as there is that one school right there, too. Okay. Again, on local roads, as far as maintenance on local roads, Wayne County does maintain the residential streets, but they, they generally do not make major improvements since they did not build them. Residential streets, the subdivisions that, that many people live in, were built by developers and paid for with the cost of your home. And in general, the costs to pave or resurface those are borne by the property owners. Typically, we have done those through a special assessment district, and we're going to touch on special assessment districts and how they work as we move through the, through the program here. So... Maintenance would, would just be patching and, winter maintenance, is that correct?
Township locals.
Right.
Winter maintenance at six inches of snow, for routine maintenance, cold patching, sweeping, things of that nature for the routine.
Go back most likely.
Sure.
Just want to understand, this I know is on the Wayne County website. This is saying Wayne County owns the township residential streets, but is not responsible for, is that what, that says essentially on the Wayne County website? It says Wayne County maintains county presidential streets here around, but is not responsible for making major improvements since the county did not build. Correct, the county owns the residential streets, correct? But yet, county's not responsible based on, because that's not the county's responsibility.
Responsible for routine maintenance, but because we didn't build them, we don't have the same responsibility of the county primary roads or the roads that were built on the county system.
By your home.
Yes.
Are there any residential subdivision streets in Houston that were built by the county?
Not that I know of. No, they were, the subdivisions here were all, went through what's called the plating process, where the roads are laid out and the lots are laid out, and developers build those. I don't think in this community we've had any that were sponsored by the township or by the county.
When you say they build them, maybe they subcontracted out to various...
The developers, yeah, yeah.
They subcontracted out. Close to saying contractors are probably used for other local projects again.
Correct.
Literally Wayne County employees or, well, did, did...
Correct. The most recent true subdivision we've had is Sheldon Estates, which is on the east side of Sheldon Road, between Palmer and Cherry Hill. It's actually still under construction. So that's a, that's a, that's the newest subdivision. Most of the construction that you see out in the township right now, the new developments are what are called site condominiums, and we're going to, we're going to get into the private roads in, in a little bit.
Bill, can I ask, when the roads were constructed, somebody set criteria of how that road was constructed and inspected? Who gave that?
So, for instance, Sheldon Estates, the newest one that was just built last year, and then Phase Two was built this year, that is a concrete road, and it is seven inches of concrete over six inches of stone, and that is the county standard for subdivision roads, I believe. Yeah, there's...
So, pretty much the county set the standard for developers that those roads, that there's the requirements.
Correct.
So, I guess that's where it gets confusing for me, maybe I'm not smarter to understand this. I tell you how you build a road, you build it to my specs, now I own the road, but yet I don't mean, I just want to fix it.
Well, and they inspect them.
Seems like such a common addiction.
They inspect them when they, when they are constructed, and they, Wayne County, your guy, your testing office does testing on the concrete, and they are there overseeing the construction of Sheldon Estates, like I said, the most recent one.
Bill?
Yes.
When, when the developers build the roads, do they provide any type of warranty for how long the road will last or anything like that?
On a subdivision, do you, you don't have a warranty on, on that, no? Not on a public subdivision road? So...
When was that decided, what language did that come into, what regulations? Because I mean, I own my home, but I didn't build it, but I'm still responsible for repairing it, so I'm trying to figure out, if you own the road, why are you not responsible?
That's a very good question, and I think the task force, that'd be a good item to go a little deeper in, because your questions are the right questions at the right time. I don't believe we've got legal representation here for Wayne County, so we're not going to put Ron on the spot to, to defend that statement that as it exists, tonight, I don't think that's in our, in the scope of what we're going to cover tonight, but you guys are right on with the questions. So don't, don't lose sight of it. Save that for later, please.
Just one more question. We got the end of the course, and then you have some other questions. I'm really, what is, the major roads, can you construct them for the road? I didn't hear the difference between the inherited and the new, or what is the major maintenance? Basically, where do you define maintenance? Maintenance there, you can...
Pothole, you know, Wayne County comes out and patched the pothole. There's debris on the road, Wayne County comes out and removes the debris. So that's, that's based, that's general maintenance.
Ceiling cracks, or ceiling joints?
Ceiling joints, we don't do a lot of joints, crack sealing in subdivisions, because it end up, it end up, it could become a, a major job that, you know, could take months and months and months. So that would be almost equated to a reconstruction project in the labor that would take in some subdivisions.
So that wouldn't be considered maintenance?
That would not be considered maintenance.
Although that would make that road's last longer if we did.
That is a preventative maintenance process, but, but it would not be part of the routine maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Can you make the distinction between the drain commissioner's responsibility and road? So for example, in our subdivision, we had several stretches where there were drains that were replaced because the road was keeping in because of the freeze thaw cycle. Is that different, like it's a pocket of money, would it Wayne County do it or is that part of roads, is it the steam from roads as far as when there's a drain involved in a residential subdivision?
So now that, that would also be considered part of routine maintenance, so when you say drain, I'm assuming you're saying catch basin, collecting the water off the roads? We do come out and rebuild those when they cave in.
That's not, it's your division.
That's our, that's our division. No, no, that's, that's, that's roads, right.
Ron, you had also talked previously to us about, I believe it was the early nineties, didn't the federal government mandate a certain type of concrete be utilized, and some of that had fallen apart, and how many?
The American construction agency decided that the cement manufacturers, their production of cements, that they were bleeding near too much, and they had to change their process into, into doing it. Unintended consequences, change the formula or the alkali content of the cement then, which caused problems, you know, years later. And unfortunately, it didn't show up for years later, too.
That was a Florida issue.
Correct.
How many roads in Canton are affected by that?
I don't have a good number.
Do we know, Bill?
I, I don't have a number on that, I would hesitate to guess, but the condition is, is obvious in many areas.
It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing problem?
It's an ongoing problem, and it's a, it's a nationwide problem.
It's not just Michigan, right? So if there's a four inch of a road today, that road will have that problem?
You know, before, before the hurricane hit Texas, Texas had the biggest alkali silica problem on their roadway because they built so many roads at that time period.
Air force?
Alkali silica reaction, ASR.
Yeah, we even did that at the Metro Earth, where we built the whole runway, which is now being torn out and replaced due to the concrete.
So is that the current issue? Can you see, I don't, well, we, 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 we,[1567.47]
an issue, but I don't, not sure if that falls under, those roads were built under this federal guideline. But down at Pheasant Run, I mean, some of those subdivisions started deteriorating within three, four years. And concrete, as far as I understand, is far more costly a process to replace. And I think that we should be taking a look at the roads that have been laid down with blacktop in our communities and whether they have held up better and the relative cost. I don't need to solve that here tonight, but I think it's something that the commission should take a look at.
Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think more current mixed designs, that is addressed in the design.
The concrete, or the concrete mixed design has been changed to, to take care of those additives are being added to the concrete to prevent the ASR.
And has it been proven to be effective to fix it?
Research so far has proven that, yes.
Okay. I mean, I, I have the same question, not just on subdivision roads, but looking at our major thoroughfares, looking at Canton Center Road and what happened there. I mean, Ford Road is blacktop, and I think we've, it's held up far better than what Canton Center held up with the concrete that we rolled out.
Answer the questions of the concrete. MDOT has experienced the same materials throughout that time, that era also. Some of you may remember 275 recently was redone just north of Canton. That section was done in the same era as the airport. It was used the same kind of concrete. And we have learned since then, there was quite a few section of the roads, and we have replaced them, pretty much all of them by now. In the past 15, 20 years, our whole industry for the concrete has learned a lot. And additives has been added and very effectively. For our state road, there is something called life cycle cost analysis to compare the concrete road and the blacktop. You just mentioned Ford Road seems to hold up pretty good underneath this concrete from 50, 60 years ago. We widened it from when we took it from the county since then, and widened it and put the layer of the blacktop on top to keep it in good shape. So, concrete and the backtop kind of work hand in hand. They work better with the concrete for trucks in terms of the same thickness. But sometimes you will need to have deeper road to put the blacktop on. So, there are a lot of consideration in there. We have learned from our life cycle cost analysis that it turns out every time we do a analysis, it's about half and half that it falls into a concrete road versus a blacktop road. So, that's just some information I can share with Bill as the...
Sure. Thank you.
When we have our task force meeting, we'll, we'll add that to our, any discussion topics.
My understanding is that some of the subdivisions have requested to add blacktop for that. No, we said, no, we got some empty, we have to replace it with cement. We have blacktop, we have to replace it with blacktop. What should we do?
We try to do a replacing kind type of thing, yes. It's visual, you know, we'll get complaints if we start making it different colors and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. Oh, there's a question in the back.
Hi, John. Yep, the problem is, so there is no substrate that belongs under the gun, no crushstone in any cases. It's just sitting in sand. That didn't help for the roads as far as standing up here. And when the road replaced out, they would crush stone, we, 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 we just go.
Hundred.
But it adds the, the actual cost. It really puts out a pretty good amount of concrete actually at times. And I say, we, very difficult to sell. I mean, you've got, when you have a sub, if you have a sub, it's impossible. Many people feel, damage to roads, entry to roads, you know, the government should give us the money, don't ask me to do that anymore. This is another big problem for the roads. I don't know the answer to that, but we have a lot of money, we're going to have to invest in roads. There isn't a company, I guess we're going to pay.
Yeah, we're going to touch on SADs, and I do remember the difficulty that you had getting signatures on, on Sunflower 8.
Oh, we can't close, so we always have a couple of people who just, but, I think the SAD can work, has worked a couple of subs, so if you have possibly 200 homes or less, it's easier to sell, easier to walk around, and no one in the, when you get in a large sub, it's, it's done.
Yeah.
See, I was, I think with Village, we have just over two miles of roads, 290 homes. People, someone down, that's a big road, they won't do it. If there's something that the person is split, if it worked on there, that went through. But, we have the street, I think, we have the same problem. I'm just trying to point out the same problem in smaller stuff. Okay, so 290 homes, that's, you know. It's just over two miles of road. When we got done tailing, I went down the way, I was sat there, somewhere, wasn't moving. And I said, look, I can't tail a few neighbors that are not cool. And we agreed, well, this is the road, it's part of the house, and I was told, well, it's our road, it's touching, but it's a litigation. So, it's back to the discretion rules, and then even if I want to carry myself, okay. That's a problem. I think we got a real problem.
We have approximately 82 more slides.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of material we want to share with you tonight. But there's also this task force, when you guys start coming together.
Right.
I think you're getting ideas for potential subcommittees here, and maybe need a few more bodies to help because of the number, the scope potentially of where this may go, may or may not go. But if we could bring this back to...
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep, keep moving forward.
Keep plowing forward. A lot of data coming at you.
Well, I'll touch a little more on local roads, Wayne County. Major repairs, reconstruction, again funded through a special assessment district. We actually did in 2015, was the most recent special assessment district in Lexington Square, which is at the southeast corner of Cherry Hill and Sheldon. Approximately 100 homes in there. The major repairs were done to, I'm going to say about 20 to 25 percent of the roads. It was ASR. It was this alkali silica reaction, and that was the entrance directly off of Cherry Hill Road, if you want to take a look at that. That was over a half a million in repairs funded by those 100 residents. We also fixed everything else we could find through the sub. But about 20 percent of it, like I said, was this ASR, and that is not a cheap project by any means. We're going to move on to some private roads, and we have a, almost 30 percent of our roads in Canton now are, are private. By the end of the year, I think we're 29 and a half. We'll be at probably 30 percent after a couple more miles this year. Those are owned in general by condominium associations. A couple examples, Cherry Hill Point over at Lots and Cherry Hill. It's a multifamily condo, Hampton Ridge South, single family. And I'll call out Cherry Hill Village, almost 900 homes, I think. That's a mixture of single family and multifamily site condos. So, almost everything post 1990s, post 1990, when the Site Condominium Act was created, the developers have chosen to go with site condominium over a subdivision because it's a quicker process. It is, that's, there's no question. Since 2004, new construction of private roads is overseen by, by my office, Engineering Services. Reconstruction, maintenance, and other projects on a private road are self-funded by the HOAs. They either come to us and approach us for a formal special assessment district, which is a somewhat lengthy process that goes through our township board, or it's funded through self-assessment. There are a number of HOAs who routinely set aside funds each year and fix and patch things as they come up and do, even do major projects on their own. So, I'm going to switch over to road funding sources. Probably not something a lot of people know about. But I'll, I'll give a quick summary here with the next couple of slides. Federal gas tax is one of the primary funding sources, 18.4 cents per gallon for gasoline and 24.4 cents for diesel. In addition, there is a state gas tax at 26.3 cents per gallon. And there's also private funding that is, that we'll talk about, which is special assessment districts. No property tax money goes to roads, except when the township board directs general fund monies to road projects. For instance, the Sheldon Center project in 2015, Canton committed general, general tax revenue of the township to fund portions of that project. So, that's a...
Bill, a couple of points here. The federal gas tax at 18.4 has stayed at 18.4 since 1994. I haven't had an increase in the federal gas tax since that point in time. On the state gas tax side, it was, it just went up last year. As you, as you recall, we had a referendum on that. Previous to that, it was, it was 7.3 cents less than what it was, 19 cents. And the diesel was, was 19 cents, but, but diesel owners also received a five cent discount on, on what they spent. That is now gone, and it's 26.3 cents for all kinds of fuels sold in the state.
So, Michigan's still considered a donor state? So, what's the differential? What we pay the, what we give?
Michigan was a donor state for a lot of years. We haven't been a donor state for probably about 10, 10 years now. And the reason for that is that the federal government now supplants the trust fund. The trust fund at the national level, it's, and our nation's capital is, is losing money because we're spending money faster than the monies coming in. And in order to, to make it all work, federal government, Congress has got to put general fund money into, into the, into the federal program. So, as a result of that, which has increased the amount of money, we're no longer a donor state. We're, I don't know what the, what the exact number is now, but we're probably at 102, 103 percent. There are still states that are doing far better than we are, but we're no longer quota donor state.
Yes.
So, same, same question about Wayne County and Canton, or Canton, if a donor went to Wayne County funds, would we get roads, not grow any back? First, will we play it in the state gas tax?
I don't know the answer to that question, to be honest with you.
Okay. So, under federal programs, there's a summary of some of the places where the federal gas tax goes. They generally fund the major improvements, bridge replacements, road reconstructions, road widenings and resurfacing. Again, the federal gas tax, 18.4 and 24.4 for diesel. As a revenue source, MDOT receives 75 percent of the federal gas tax money. Counties, cities, and villages get the remainder, 25 percent.
It's been communicated on several different levels that the, the increases in the gas tax money is, in the state of Michigan at least, going to be focused on the highways first before the locals even get a chance to smell it, right? Is it going to be a while till Wayne County gets to benefit in the cities, cities and counties?
Let me clarify that because that statement was true in a little different way. So, first, the reason why we're focusing on highway instead of non-highway for federal funds is because of the criterion of getting federal funds matched. Right now, for the bridge side, there are two major parts of money, bridge and road. On the bridge side, we're actually paying penalty because our bridge are not in the required level of pristine conditions. So, once 75 a bridge is done because of the size of the bridge, Michigan will be back in compliance for the bridge, and we don't have to pay penalty on bridges. We're trying to keep the road funds not to have to pay penalties. So, our strategy becomes investing in the freeway because the penalty is only for the freeway side, for the federal requirements. So, most of our funding on the federal side, federal fundings, will be invested on the freeway first to make sure we're not paying penalty. The rest of the money that we have will be addressed for the rest of our system. So, that is the part that I believe you're referring to. And I also saw a few eyebrows raised when the word 75 percent of the funding goes to MDOT. I do want to address that point because MDOT owns airport, rail lines, international crossing. We also administer quite a few different facilities, like rest area, welcome center. Those are all different part of money. It's not strictly from federal highway, so it's not directly only related to roads and bridges only. On top of that, I, I wanted to make sure that we also talk a little bit about Wayne County funds because my understanding, Ron can correct me if I'm wrong, the increase of the gas tax, Wayne County will increase their funding, go towards the counties and the cities also, more so than the state, a little bit more percentage wise. Tom can also correct me if I'm wrong. So, that is my understanding of the changes in the gas tax in the state.
So, let's talk about that, supervisor. So, I talked about at the federal level that Congress was, was adding money to, from the general fund in order for, to, to increase the, the trust fund. Same thing was happening at the state level where a few years ago, legislature was putting additional, additional dollars from the general fund into the transportation fund. So, we pass a, we passed a tax a couple of years ago, and supposed to add $600 million of new revenue to Michigan Transportation Fund. Only, we haven't got $600 million yet. And that's because as part of this, the legislature backed out, was backing out the money that it had put in from general fund over a period of years. And so, it's going to take us till probably 2019, I think it is, before we realize the entire $600 million of new funds.
Paul needs to repay Peter.
And in addition to that, though, what we passed, they also talked about the fact that starting in 2020, they would find 600, an additional $600 million of savings and would begin to put that money back into the fund as well. So, we'll have to wait and see when we get to 2020 if they continue to do that or not. The increase that we received gets, the increase in the gas, the state gas tax money gets distributed according to Act 51. So, on the state side, we had talked about 75 percent of the federal money going to the, to the, to the state and 25 percent going to the locals. On the state side, 39 percent of that, 39 percent of the increase in state money goes to MDOT. 39 percent of it goes to county road commissions, county departments of, of transportation in this sense. So, there's 83 of those in the state. So, that, that 39 percent gets distributed through the 83. And then cities and villages get the remaining 22 percent, and that gets divided up about 500 or some cities that are in the state. So, that's how that money gets distributed as you, as you go down. And I will tell you that $600 million being split among 619 road agencies in total of our state doesn't go a long way. Doesn't, doesn't amount to a lot of increase. So, when people hear that kind of money, they, that's a lot of money. But at the end of the day, it, it, it doesn't do an awful lot, to be perfectly honest with you.
Eighty-three slides here. Federal funds. Federal funds cannot be used for maintenance and repair. Generally, they're not used for routine maintenance or operations such as mowing. It can be useful for capital preventative maintenance, chip sealing, things that extend the life of the asset. These are some of the different programs that are funded. I don't know if we necessarily need to discuss all of these here. Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act is the current act that covers the federal funds. A number of different programs under that, Economic Development Funds, TEDC as it's called, Transportation Alternative Programs, Surface Transportation Block Grants, Safety Programs, Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality, CMAC. SEMCOG and Carmine's Organization coordinates the priorities amongst all the different federal aid committees where this money is essentially used by the different road agencies and cities. The federal aid committee in this area is for, we have one committee that includes all of the communities in Wayne County except Detroit. Detroit has its own federal aid committee. And the federal aid committee, we meet twice a year. Ron Agazinski is our chairman, and there's a representative from each community. The use of federal aid funds includes, if you're going to have a federally funded project through the federal aid committee, it includes a 20 percent match by the locals, the locals being the cities, villages, in many cases, the township kicks in that 20 percent. And the 80 percent comes through the federal gas tax. The list of federal aid eligible projects is maintained and overseen by SEMCOG in Wayne County. It is limited, limited to those primary roads. Participation, again, by all, all the different Wayne County communities, excluding Detroit. Like I said, they have their own federal aid committee. We meet in usually July and then again in, in December is the typical schedule. So, we'll move on to state funding. State funding is governed through what's called Public Act 51 that establishes those road networks. It funds the Michigan Transportation Fund, the MTF, and distributes monies for a formula. Again, these are the different revenue sources for the Michigan Transportation Fund. The gas tax that we've spoken about, motor vehicle and title and registration fees that were increased a few years ago for cars and light trucks. were increased a few years ago for cars and light trucks. Starting in 2022, there's going to be a CPI inflation adjustment on a fuel, on the fuel tax, and that's going to be capped at five percent a year. So, in 2022, it will likely be drifting upwards. We'll see how that goes. Act 51 funds are used for maintenance and repair of roads. These are the percentages that Carmine touched on earlier, thirty-nine point one percent to MDOT, thirty-nine point one percent to the counties and twenty-one point eight percent to the cities and villages.
The county is part of the twenty-one point one percent?
No.
No.
Canton's part of the thirty-nine percent that goes to the counties.
Right, right. Act 51 money can also be used to match, to provide that twenty percent match on federally funded projects. For instance, Ron, I think Canton Center project right now, Canton Center between Geddes and Michigan Avenue is a federally, a federal project and the county is providing the twenty percent match for that, which just started on Monday, last Monday. Due to the, just a note on the state funding, due to the phase into the gas tax and phase out of general fund transfers, the full increase of the gas tax really will be felt until 2020. The current budget with the Michigan Transportation Fund is about two point two five billion. Eight hundred and eighty million goes to MDOT, eight hundred and eighty million to the county roads and four, forty, four ninety-one million to the cities and villages. Same percentages reflected on the previous slide. Certain legislative alternatives can be used to increase the Michigan Transportation Fund. There certainly is increasing pressure from the public and businesses to improve roads. I don't even know why we need to say that. I think everybody knows that. Most additional funding alternatives are tax or fee increases and revenue shifts. You know, that's really something that's dealt with in Lansing. I don't know if you want to touch on that, Carmine, but...
Only to say the legislature thinks they've dealt with it. So, I wouldn't hold my breath for, for looking for more money.
State at least. Canton has, like I mentioned earlier, Canton has participated in the federal aid projects with the county and MDOT over the past thirty years. I, again, have the Sheldon Center reconstruct up there. We paid, Canton paid about one point five million, including the twenty, that included the twenty percent match on that project and some of the other improvements to Sheldon Road and the Sheldon Connector. We have a long-running history of partnering with the county on those.
Is there anything that you want to say? Should be more than twenty percent?
Yeah, and Sheldon Center was unique because there were certain portions of that project that were not federal aid eligible. So, they were a hundred percent funded by, by the township. That was, that was a unique project. We, just going back on some of the Canton Township initiatives over the past years, in 2006 to 2009, Canton had committed about a million dollars each year to selected projects. Couple examples there, the rehabilitation and overlay of Lily from Ford to Palmer in oh nine, the rehabilitation of Morton Taylor north of Warren and also on Sheldon, Ford to Cherry Hill. We did a variety of techniques on those. Those were fully funded by the Township Board. And we had to end that in 2009 with the recession. Another prod, another program that had been created by the Township Board in oh four was the Intersection Audit Committee. It, it, it met for a number of years and it looked at all of the intersections, the main intersections, thirty-four of them. And we looked at them with a citizens group to establish and prioritize safety improvements. So, there were thirty sections, thirty-four intersections. We anticipated at the time we would address them all over a ten-year period. That also ended in 2009 with the recession. There were millage monies that were shifted to be able to do that, but they had to be shifted back due to operational issues with the township. Two thousand nine was the last year of the program. I did that one. We did intersection improvements, Cherry Hill, at Lily, Hagerty and Canton Center. We did, added left turn signals, we added turn lanes, we did repaving of those intersections. Salts and Lily was a light signal that was put in. And that last year of the program was about one point three five million. That, that was our last year of that program. Another, not often spoken of, funding source are developer-funded projects. I'll give a most recent example. In 2016, Grandview Estates, which is a new development on the southwest corner of Denton and Geddes, it's a Pulte. They were required through the review process with Wayne County and Canton to do significant improvements at their entrance on Denton Road south of Geddes. At that, that, those amount of improvements, turn lanes and the, and the improvements to Denton Road were coincided with a county project to signalize Denton and Geddes, which occurred last fall. So, the mechanism there was Wayne County worked with the developer and just said, "Give us the money and we'll do those improvements." So, that was a, as opposed to having a private project going on at the same time as a publicly funded intersection improvement, the county took the funds directly from Pulte and did all of those improvements at once. And those signals are, are certainly online and they were needed. Another private funding, privately funded improvement in, in 2015, West Ridge Development at the southwest corner of Ridge and Ford, almost three hundred homes. There were significant improvements needed to the Ford and Ridge intersection. About two hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements were done by Toll Brothers. The mechanism was Wayne County, MDOT and Canton required the traffic analysis and the impact analysis showed those improvements were, were necessary. In particular, it was on the northbound Ridge Road, the left turn movements onto the state highway, and they had to extend that, what's called a stacking lane to allow more cars to line up to make that left turn. So, if you recall that from about two years ago, those, those improvements were done, funded by Toll. Another, probably one of our largest improvements done directly by a developer was in oh five and oh six when IKEA came in. They did approximately two point seven million of improvements on westbound Ford near Hagerty. And they also expanded the southbound two seventy-five and Ford off-ramp. That was, went from three lanes to four due to the enormous volumes generated by their store. Again, traffic analysis by all the agencies and those, those, those improvements were, were mandated and paid for by IKEA. Private funding occurs when can, when can Canton or other agencies require improvements? This is a question that comes up quite a bit. During site plan review, the very initial reviews done by the township, we can ask for a traffic impact analysis if there's over a thousand trips per day generated by a development. That was the case on the Toll Brothers site at, at Ford and Ridge. With three hundred-plus homes there, they were generating over a thousand trips per day. And another thing that, that can be mandated is paving of unpaved roads if the certain conditions are met. Wayne County and MDOT both have requirements and standards that, that they look at in their traffic impact analysis that can require road improvements. Jim?
Is that thousand view per day threshold of that township condition or is that county-wide?
That's in our Township zoning ordinance, right? Right.
Bill, to add on to that, and of course, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. I call this a death by a thousand cuts because every development adds just a little bit more. And it's not like one developer's going to develop from Hamford Road all the way to Ford Road. And so, if you get one development that adds fifty trips or hundred and fifty trips, by the time it's all said and done, as the developments pile on, you get your thousand trips, but none of them have fallen under this requirement. And so, therefore, we don't end up requiring them to pave the road. So, as part of the commission, I would like to see us look at this requirement and maybe work with Wayne County as well if they're, they have part of the requirement, to see if we should be adjusting this based on how much of the road they're taking up.
Any thoughts on that, Ron? I, you know, with, with low-volume developments?
I mean, that's why Ridge, I mean, Ridge, yeah, Ridge Road wasn't paved over the years because of that and other roads the same way. And I don't know what it took eventually to pave Beck Road when it was paved between Ford and Warren back in the day. But, you know, I just feel like we miss out on an opportunity to have a developer put money in, even if we hold it for a while, towards that project. So, I'd just like to see a discussion on that.
I, I think we will definitely discuss that in this group. Couple other items that, that sometimes kick in a traffic analysis on an industrial site, we can request a traffic impact analysis. Another unique development technique that's used here in Canton quite a bit is called a planned development district, which allows negotiation between the developer and Canton. And we have made many agreements, and a spelling error here too, I see, between developers and Canton. The PDD is, has been used in, I would say, the majority of developments that, larger developments that I've seen over the past fifteen years. For instance, we've done some contract special assessment districts directly with the developer. Those were generally agreements. One that was done in about oh five, oh six was the Salts Road paving from Canton Center to Ridge, about a two-mile gravel road that was changed into what it is today. It was funded by several developers, Pulte, Dick Lewiston, Livonia Builders, all provided funds to pave that two-mile stretch of road. They all had developments on either side and they provided those funds to us. We designed it and oversaw that project. We'll touch a little bit on a traditional special assessment district, which is done by a petition by residents. Some of you have probably heard, heard of these. It's driven by not only homeowner associations, but sometimes just by property owners who line up along a particular road. The residents petition the township and they go through a fairly lengthy process of public hearings, development of estimates and ultimately bidding of a project. A couple of examples, Copper Creek was done in 2008. That was a private road condominium up in Warren Road west of Hagerty. Weathersfield condominium at Palmer and Hagerty, the south, southwest corner, multifamily condominium, asphalt roads. They had, they turned their petition around in, in several months and got eighty-five to ninety percent of the people in there to agree. And Lexington Square, which I had mentioned earlier, also was done in 2005. It was a concrete road, county public subdivision. Private funding, I just wanted to give a few ideas of what, what costs were per lot on some of the SADs we've done. Of course, very variable because you have some that are complete reconstruct of the roads, some are milling of asphalt and replacement. Based on the last few SADs that we've done, asphalt SAD in particular, Weathersfield and some of the earlier ones, five thousand to eight thousand dollars per lot was not unusual. The concrete roads, which were complete reconstruction, I mentioned two of them earlier, about eight thousand to ten thousand per lot for concrete roads. Yeah?
Why was that made? The homeowners association prepared, is that a more fair, that they're paying for that?
Yeah, yeah. The homeowner associations, in each case, we've done an SAD, they're the lead. You know, they're the, the group of HOA board members who, who go ask us for the petitions and then circulate the petition.
Is there a place where they have to go through a SAD?
If they're going to go through the township, yeah, yeah, they have to go through a special assessment district.
If we're going to play bank for them?
Yeah.
Then they have to go through the process.
Yeah. I, I probably should have had it in the presentation. There's two advantages I see of doing a special assessment district. The primary advantage is that you get to use the township as a bank. Each of those SADs that we've done are, the payback is over a ten-year period. Lexington Square, for instance, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is a steep amount for a HOA of a hundred people to go out and, and raise. So, they were able to use us as a bank and pay that off. Yep.
And we should just, for a public sake, note that we're bonding it out. We're not using general fund dollars to, as the bank for that.
Correct. We have specific limits, five hundred thousand is a very minimum. And we do, we have to issue debt to be able to fund those projects. It's usually a year, a year and a half. John, I see your hand back there.
Well, four years ago, we got very close for a red carpet concern.
Yes?
That cost, you could never nail down. The primary payment was fifteen thousand dollars. I know what it is on your slide. The ten thousand dollars, the exposure cost and that for the last four years.
The examples I gave were the ones that we had completed. When, when you and I had looked at, at Sunflower Eight, the Sunflower Eight, it was a, one of the phases that had essentially completely, it has completely been, the whole thing has been affected by this ASR. And you're right, I think the estimated costs at that time were quite a bit higher because it was complete removal. With Lexington Square, they only removed about twenty percent of their subdivision was affected, whereas with Phase Eight in Sunflower, the entire, the entire road was needed replacement.
So, I guess what I was saying, is how much of that, so, you're, to do that cost, it's very difficult to handle that.
That's correct. I'll, I'll add a, an aside, when we do a special assessment district now, we actually ask the homeowner association to provide, I think it's fifteen hundred upfront. And with that, we retain an engineering firm that does an assessment of the road and comes up with a current engineer's estimate. And we've, we've had that policy in place five, six years now because when a homeowner association group is going out door-to-door and shopping this petition around, now they have a engineer's estimate prepared by a licensed engineer that we retain. And that's, it's much...
Is that a Paser's estimate?
No, they go through the whole, they go through the whole development and come up with much more specific costs than a Paser. They look at, are we going to need to fix this catch basin? How many linear feet of road are going to need to be replaced? They're, they're not doing, they're not doing soil borings. No, but they are, they're doing as best they can because we generally know historically how each of these subdivisions are built in the cross-section. However, I will also add that there are some developments, some larger subdivisions here, who have commissioned their own assessments. When we did Weathersfield with, which is a condominium, they actually presented us with twenty soil borings that they had done. And there was another development, Stone Vale, Oak, Oakvale Stone Gate over near Palmer and Lily. They commissioned a engineering firm to put in thirteen or fourteen borings through the concrete to see exactly what the road was throughout that development and had that engineering firm develop an estimate. They developed a series of estimates. So, we do one for, you know, fifteen hundred, we, we feel we get a pretty good idea of what that's going to cost. But that's something we've, we've learned in the past ten years. Easier to shop that around when you have something to hold on to. So, a few other examples of costs that I can throw out there. Canton Center, the project from 2011 was four point three million. That was a widening project right out here in front of our Township Hall. That was a widening project right out here in front of, of our Township Hall. And that was about three point one six million dollars per mile, if you look at that project on a per-mile basis. When we did the intersection improvement program, each of the intersections that we did averaged about five hundred thousand. We were doing pavement improvements. In most cases, we were doing signal upgrades and, and adding turn lanes and extending, stacking within left turn lanes. So just a few examples of, of costs. Prioritization, how, how do the agencies do this? This is a, a system called Pacer that is used. Pavement, can you recall what the acronym stands for?
Oh, it is developed by the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's prevalent throughout the upper Midwest, and I think Wisconsin was one of the early adopters, and University of Wisconsin in Madison. It's essentially used, it's a visual rating system of segments of road, a segment being from one intersection to the next, to evaluate pavement conditions. It gives you a zero to ten rating, ten being a completely new road, just constructed, zero being complete rubble. That's, it's, it's, it's a consistent way to look at a whole road network and be able to compare. Wayne County does the, their entire primary road network, they do a half each year. So every year, they flip back and forth and, and drive all the roads. It's a, Pacer is something we'll probably take a look at in the, in the committee, and the committee will, will be familiar with it. There's the acronym, pavement surface evaluation rating, I should know that. It's a windshield road rating system. You have several people in the vehicle driving extremely slow, and as they move through each segment, the group in the car has to agree on, on the number. Again, one to ten is, is the rating system. It considers the type of road, the number of visual defects. It does not get into the details of that catch base that needs to be fixed, or there's a pothole here. It's looking at the segment and having a group of professionals agree on, on the rating. It gives you that, it gives you the ability to compare all the different roads.
Just a question about, about that. You said correctly, Wayne County does primary roads every two years.
Yes.
How much does it change? Is it worthwhile to do it every two years? It can't be cheap to take a load of people down the road.
Well, can change a lot, especially given, especially given the winters that we have around here, the, the pavement service condition can change a lot. Oh, absolutely. It's on the asset management website. I was the chairman of the State Asset Management Council for twelve years, setting this, setting this program up. There is no cost to Wayne County in doing this, because all the costs are reimbursed by the, the Transportation Asset Management Council. So Wayne County, any county, and any city that wants to do this, we reimburse on a, on a dollar, a certain dollar per, per mile charge. They identify for us the number of miles of road that, every year that they, that they rate, plus they give us a copy of the ratings. All this is, is very transparent. It's on the Transportation Asset Management website. You can go back and look the last twelve years of what, how a, how a road is rated. SEMCOG website has this information as well. Tell you what the, what the rating was, let's say, back in two thousand six, if there's been any improvements made on the asset management website, it will tell you what improvement was made there, what the ratings were afterwards. These things are being tracked, and, and it's a, it's also a requirement of the state, it's, it's in law. There was a law that was passed, it was Public Act four ninety-nine in two thousand and two, that required the, this type of analysis being done on all the federal aid roads, all the roads that are federally eligible, and, and then communities have the ability to also petition to get funding to do the non-federal aid roads, which is what a lot of the communities are doing today. Yes, the money, the money comes off the top on Act, of the Act fifty-one, so.
So Wayne County may not be paying for it, but in the long run, we'll all pay for it because we're spending money on that rather than fixing roads, right?
We're spending money hopefully in a more efficient way, because we're, we're, we're better identifying where to make the investments and when to make the investments, so that the, the actual, the actual roadway will last longer. It extends, if you make the right improvement at the right time, it'll extend, extend the, the life of that roadway, and that's the game plan behind all this. The budget that the Asset Management Council has, hasn't changed in the last fifteen years. It's about one point six million dollars a year, and of that money, about sixty percent of it goes to collect the data, about twenty percent goes to education. We do a lot of education. And the people that are road raiders, that, you know, you just don't go in the car and start looking at things. You have to pass a class in order to do that, and that's what some of the rest of the money that we have does. You, you have to pass a class and pass a test, actually, to be, to be a road raider, to be able to do this.
Again, pacer ratings are not too complicated, but they do get a consistent rating, community-wide. The, the big cost associated with the evaluation recommendations on the repair and the ranking of the priorities, it's, it's actually used in the federal aid committee with all of the county primary roads. In our lists of projects, you'll see the pacer ratings for the different segments throughout Wayne County that we look at with, with Ron and the federal aid committee each, each, each year. The primary roads are done every other year. The subdivision roads have, have not been done. I, I would add, I'm, there's a unique road maintenance association that was developed in, in Canton. The, the three subdivisions that surround this area, that surround the golf course, including Summit Boulevard, Glengarry, and the three subdivisions, when they were developed with the golf course, they were grouped into what's called the Pheasant Run Road Maintenance Association. The Pheasant Run Road Maintenance Association collects dues of a few hundred dollars each year, and that is what funds the, the repairs to these subdivisions, these three that are here, including Summit. You probably saw there was some work on Summit. So we actually do a pacer rating again every other year with our retained engineering firm. It's a few thousand dollars, it's not, it's not much, but it allows us to see, because we have nine hundred and fifty residents here in a significant road network, and we use that pacer rating to, to determine what we're gonna fix each year. The township contributes to that also. Yep, yep, and
Maybe to help explain that, we are a partner because of the Summit Parkway that leads back to the Summit facilities.
Yep.
So that's a piece of that network, that's why we're
And we have a piece of Glengarry that runs out to Beck Road, so it's, it's a contribution from the three subdivisions and the homeowners, and then the Township puts in funds. And we, we get a, a touch, a little bit of money from the, the hospital here, and also from the links, which has an entrance on it, onto it. That's, that's unique within the community, but it, it has set up a road repair and maintenance for these, these three subdivisions. So we're getting towards the last few slides here, Canton's challenges. You know, we don't really need to say the, the, the big picture, that roads in Canton are, are bad, cost to repair, not replace them. Cost to repair the bad roads is very, is very high. Wayne County is financially constrained and likely will be for a long time, I think that's fair. Residents ultimately will have to fund the solution. The Roads Task Force that's being set up is gonna look at these issues in greater detail. Some of the things we talked about internally, future improvement priorities have to include the mile roads, the county primaries, and the local roads, in order to obtain any buy-in from residents who live on the private roads. We have a significant private road network. You know, quality of roads is equivalent to, to the quality of life. Just a few notes as we move forward, some of the gravel roads that still exist, Ridge, portions of Warren, Bar Road, Mott, portions of Lot, Lots Road, south of Michigan that remain gravel, still serve as minor collector roads, and they support the major mile roads. Ultimately, however, the Ford Road Boulevard works out, or other improvements to Ford Road, Canton will have to put funds into Ford Road in order for MDOT to move the Boulevard plan up on the priority list. How much, when, that's yet to be determined. We've certainly talked to the Downtown Development Authority, which is a unique authority that, that exists along Ford Road, that does have a funding source, and they, they certainly will be part of our discussions on any Ford Road Boulevard plan. Sources of funds from, for Canton Township, you know, certainly allocating funds from the general, general budget of the Township has been done in the past. An increase in millage. Under Act fifty-one, the state, state gas tax fund and act that set that up, you can increase a millage by the vote of the Township Board. They can increase the millage by three mills, four roads specifically, or by a vote of the residents. You can also increase a millage an additional three mills. Those are established under Act fifty-one. Here's an example of what a mill would provide. One mill of increase results in approximately three and a half million each year. That's what one mill generates in this community. The desire of the Township Board, as we move forward, is to fund primary road improvements, participating with Wayne County, as we've done in the past, funding local subdivision and road improvements, again, participating with Wayne County, potentially funding road widens or improvements on the state highways, such as Ford Road. You know, our, our conundrum, and we'll just lay it out for you, is that we have twenty-nine and a half percent of our roads are private. Could a millage, if passed, could any of those funds be used on private roads? And the answer is no. So you have a, a significant amount of the community who would not directly benefit, should a millage pass. Not directly benefit, meaning an improvement to the road in front of my house. We all benefit when, when the mile roads are fixed, when the state highways are maintained and fixed. But that's a key issue, we'll be getting into more detail with the Roads Group. Another option that's out there, and we've certainly talked about it here quite a bit, is becoming a city. Becoming a city and not a township would convert us into a road agency, like Livonia, like Westland, like all the other cities. We would obtain Act fifty-one funds at that point, we'd be eligible for certain fundings directly from the state, and also applying for projects on our own, as Livonia does, and Westland does, and the other cities do. We would not gain jurisdiction over the primary roads, we would not gain jurisdiction over Cheery Hill, or Warren, or Lily, or Sheldon. Those would remain in, in county, in county jurisdiction. We would, we would gain the local subdivision roads and the Act fifty-one money that flows to those. Becoming a city at this point, where we're almost at a hundred thousand in population, would require a significant revenue increase to get even close to what Wayne County maintenance does. So those are, sure, you have a question?
When you're saying significant revenue increases, you mean on top of the Act fifty-one money that we would be receiving?
Yes, yes. We would, we would have a much larger Department of Public Works, a Roads Division. We would take over permitting on all county, on all local roads, so increases not only in personnel and equipment, but in staff for, for engineering and, and the DPW, so.
And we would not have jurisdiction over all of our roads, just the local ones?
We would still not gain the mile roads, the primary roads.
Do you have an estimate of what the total cost would be for us if we were to try to create a department?
Preliminary numbers have been done, but they need to be updated, and they will be provided to the Task Force, and when Task Force does receive that data, we'll share with the, the Board as well. I think that's possible, eh?
Yeah, yep. Last time we looked at it was probably ten years ago. Yes? Uh, the twenty-nine percent that are private, those are site condominiums and multifamily condominiums. All condominiums. Does not include subdivision, right. Subdivision roads are about, probably closer to fifty percent of the Township, the balance being state highways and, and county primaries. So I wanted to touch on another option that's out there. This is allowable under the Act fifty-one, we call it the Bloomfield Township Option. They're the only township in the state that has done this. They did it, I think, in the late seventies. Under Act fifty-one, a township can commit a certain amount of funds and become eligible to receive some of the Act fifty-one, under a delegation agreement. It's, we'll, we'll get into a little more detail with the Roads Task Force on how that works. Perhaps there's a reason why Bloomfield Township is the only one that's ever done it, but we'll, we'll provide more details on that. They, they work with Oakland County under a delegation agreement. Some things they do, some things the county still does, so I didn't want to get into a lot of detail here, but it is out there as an option. And we will, we will study that. And I'll, I'll kind of end here. We, we certainly will take more questions, but we want to talk about the Task Force a little bit, yeah?
Just, just a kind of a quick math question based on, because there was a lot of, a lot of things given on millages. Four hundred and ten miles of road, sixty-five percent, all are presented, so two hundred and sixty plus or minus miles of road that we've got to kind of figure out a way to do. We raised the, the taxes, three mills generates roughly ten million dollars.
Correct.
Set up a mile road, it costs about three million dollars to pave that, so for the tax increase, we can pave three and a half miles of road a year. Two hundred and sixty miles of road, it'll take us about eighty years.
You know, that, that original number I put out there for the Canton Center project out here was a widening and a replacement of the entire road, so that, that
That map, or two years?
Correct, correct. And we wouldn't necessarily be rebuilding and reconstructing every road. We would go through, you know, in, in, in things that we've talked about internally, we would do pacer ratings and determine where we can get the best bang for our buck.
But we still go down, with that map, we still go over the falls.
Mark, Mark, what you're doing right now is what I've been doing for the last year and a half, and that, it's like the movie War Games. You know how that ends, it's just there is no win. So far with, so that's why we're asking the Task Force to do exactly what they're, they're, they're
Yeah.
Gonna attempt to do. Well, there's no, those are not rec, those are not, those are
Yeah.
Potential options, those are not anything that is planned at this point, at all.
Right. We want to lay out the numbers the way they are.
It also doesn't mean that, that homeowner associations won't have to put in match money eventually, and that the county might still not, as they did the last two years prior to this, put money in as well. It's not, we're not doing all the roads in a bubble as Canton Township.
Right.
It's not gonna make you feel any better, but this is a situation that every community in our region, and every community in the state, is, is, is dealing with. There just isn't enough resources coming from the feds, coming from the state, and in some cases, even coming from the local communities themselves. I mean, this is, we've gotten to the point where we've gotten way behind the eight ball on this thing, and, 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 you know, we're looking at trying to, to really try to prioritize what the needs are. That's really the only, in the short run, that's really the only opportunity that you have, is really trying to identify what are the most important things that you absolutely positively have to do, and how can you fund those?
My point to all this was, unless we change the useful life of a substrate that we're putting in, we'll never get it. So it can't just be about reconstructing roads the way we've all done. You can't catch up.
Well, every road network is different. I would, you know, point out Holiday Park, up, up in the northeast corner of the Township, those roads are those roads are from the mid-sixties. They're in pretty darn good shape, you know? They definitely...
Not everywhere.
Yeah. You know, there's different road construction methods through the decades, no question. Yeah, I mean, everything is not a complete reconstruct. As we've done special assessment districts, some of them, we've only had to do a small percentage of repairs. Every one is not going to be a complete reconstruct. So, you have a question, John?
Has anyone else considered rewriting the nineteen fifty-four special assessment district act? It's antiquated. Eight sixty-one percent of it's a good policy, and homeowners are going to pay. Fifty percent, fifty-one percent. The thing we can do with that, maybe make it more adjustable.
I don't know if they've ever considered in Lansing rewriting the nineteen fifty-four Special Assessment District Act. No, I've looked at it many times, and it is a bit antiquated. But that's, I don't have an answer for that. It's a question for your legislature. I wanted to touch on the task force that's being created. We created it, the Township Board passed a resolution to create that on July twenty-fifth. Jim Castillo is here tonight. Jim had been a planner with the community for a number of years, and also represented the community in Lansing, and has a, still lives here, and has a long background and knowledge of many of these issues. So thank you for coming tonight, Jim. Sitting right behind him is Tom Casari, my predecessor here, and I'm sure both will be great resources for this group. Jim, I don't know if we have anyone else here. It's going to be on a summer, you're going to be the representative for the board. And anyone else? John Spencer? We've got quite a few, quite a few people who are on that.
Perhaps, could we perhaps go around and have folks introduce themselves?
Yeah, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Sure. If you have been contacted about being on the task force, let's start with Mark Horvath.
Maybe where you're from, or east, west, north, center, from Canton. Representative, okay, good answer.
I'm on roughly Sheldon Center. Terry Moore, back in.
Lot workers on the block.
Hey, Jordan. I'm from Taylor and Salt.
Okay, I'm here back in.
Bridge Belcher, what point was Bridge in one?
Two, one, the capability.
So it's sort of showing, or like, in terms of...
T D Brown, here at Ford Road.
John Jackson, getting, and... Our, sorry, senior parts of the, so, so, the, you know, east side of the...
Okay. It's great, we have half of our board here, I think, our task force.
We have Commissioner Joe Barone, who's also going to participate.
Yeah, great.
Then from staff supporting, we also have Director of Public Safety, Canton resident, Josh Myers, who's coming in from a public safety perspective. Wendy Trumbull, Director of Finance, also Canton resident, has expressed interest in supporting the group for crunching the numbers and what are other communities doing, as well as, who am I forgetting? Well, no, no.
Me?
We've got Bill. Bill's going to be the Municipal Services Division. So we've got three representatives from the township.
And we also have two representatives from the school district, who are not able to be here tonight.
From the school district as well, will be joining, so. Think a pretty good cross-section of the community there.
Jim, I added a...
When will the committee submit a written report to the board? Are we talking months, a year, days, weeks?
We're hoping.
Do you want to go podium? As Chair, sir, step up, welcome.
In some preliminary conversations with the supervisor and trustee, they indicated they'd like to have something, you know, by spring. And I don't know where else you'd like to go this evening. I don't know if you had any, if you had some of the tentative charge to the task force. I think obviously, well, our first initial activities will focus around just simply getting organized. Setting out a letter of, a little bit more of a letter of introduction, helping us, making sure we have names, addresses, emails. Do we meet the first and third Mondays, or the fourth and seventeenth Wednesdays of each month? What time of the evening? Get some of that organizational information together first. We'll circulate some ideas, idea generators for some tentative types of ideas of a charge focus for the committee. I think it's important for all the members to feel able and welcome to add to that, give some thought starters to those ideas for a charge. I approach things from the outset, recognizing that, or taking the approach that none of us is as smart as all of us, and that we have, all have a common interest here, and all have a great deal to potentially contribute to that. I'd encourage members who were able to be here this evening to take not only the information and the data that's been presented tonight, but also to start generating your own questions, the questions we'd like to see addressed. What is the data that we'd like to see? What are some of those data points and points of information that we'd like to see? And then, as I said, we'll go through an organizational effort, review the charges of the committee, try to come to at least some initial consensus regarding the charges of the committee, give some thought to how we can approach those activities as a committee of the whole, and when might we break into appropriate subcommittees? If we can identify appropriate areas where some of that work could be taken, better taken on in a, on a subcommittee type of basis. And it sounds like, and I'm excited to hear that, people are also interested in challenging assumptions, in challenging the current practices and the way of doing things, and looking for what might be some good recommendations to put forward to the Township ultimately next spring for how Canton might consider improving its dead and its quality of life relative to road condition. And I'd welcome, if I may, Mr. Supervisor, invite other, any initial comments or reactions from any of the other audience members or task force members at this time.
I have a question about the funding. We mentioned, and I don't know if this is possible, but there's so much development on Ford Road, it draws traffic down the corridor. And the businesses are good for the community, but the traffic is also difficult on the roads. So is there any opportunity to somehow leverage the businesses, or how businesses can impact by a potential increase in taxes? Because that additional traffic is part of what's wrong with the roads in Canton, we own a lot of business. So how can that possibly be leveraged and will reference, help address this, prevent, you know, basically, tax increases in the homeowners?
That's certainly a valid question. Obviously, if there, if one of the recommendations of the task force would be to seek a millage, obviously, millages are imposed upon all forms of real property, which would include, you know, businesses and industries and office buildings contributing toward that fund as well. But we can explore, and there's, once again, other forms of special assessment districts, DDA contributions, et cetera, can all go into that type of potential funding mix.
Since you have everybody here, you may be getting all ahead of ourselves, but somebody must be doing this well. And are we able to identify who, even if it's best to the worst? Are we able to tell who is doing well? I'm not saying we're not, but we can identify that so we can kind of compare what we might want to be doing?
Absolutely. I would, I certainly don't want to reinvent the wheel. And just as Carmine, you know, pointed out, dozens of communities are addressing themselves to this issue, and there's got to be a number of best practices for us to take a look at and evaluate and assess their applicability to our own unique community.
John, I'll be pulling together a number of communities who have programs in place.
For example, we've been working with Clinton Township in Macomb County, going through a very similar exercise. We'd be happy to provide the, their materials, their reports to you for your consideration.
To your point, John, to further that, your point that you're making, Canton Township, absolutely, in every category save for roads across the state, we are a benchmark community. Everybody says, "How you doing at Canton Public Safety? How you doing at DPW guys? How you doing this and that?" Across town, in everything we're doing, leisure services, except for one area. And this is one where, for whatever reason, we are where we are today. I'm hoping and praying that the task force may be able to come together, offer up some solutions and ideas to give some direction to the board in the future, so we can add to that list. The one item where we're weak is our roads. Let's not be weak there anymore.
So, I'm wondering, Will, I think it's, you can't just go on transport, you want to welcome people there, you're trying to challenge the task force. One of the things I look at, I might even get some kind of a website, you can compare your address, and, oh, the city, Canton County, I'm trying to find that, so, thirty-six foot, one square mile in Canton, five point nine, so, the highway road, all the road that Semcog, but, compared to ninety-nine in Canton, four hundred and seventy-eight, and all the way, so, there is to be a cost of one, by, for, over, what we're doing today, it's right in the score, and, well, we can do a great deal. My last tip would be, that I think this is not just a funding issue, this is an accountability exercise. Of course, as a seventeen-year resident of Canton, who's been actively involved in studying the road issue, and, like, neighbors, it's incredible to see the lack of accountability that exists, going to Canton Township with the road issues, like, in County, on the road, like, on Wayne County's own website, they own roads, they're not responsible. But that is a conundrum, I don't know what is. So I would like to see an end game resulting in greater accountability, and hence more efficient, effective, and, you know, the bigger the next solutions, the more, one than the other, from a random lottery, twenty-two homeowners, associations, that happened about two, three years ago here, that, you know, Wayne County coming here, I was very thrilled, eight months ago, Wayne County had a federal grant, and it was going to fix this year between, or, between Canton Center and that, and that just then, without any information, just moved, and said, "So we're going to do a next year, no accountability." So I guess that's one of the things that I want to propose, not funding in the offices, it's to kill throughout the state, throughout the nation, because I need to, but at the same time, I think there's a difference between working harder and working smarter. I'd like to think that if we, if we, if we, our former government, we get, we...
Okay. Are there any board comments to wrap up?
Just as a wrap up, I mean, thanks, everybody, for coming, and thanks for the hard work that you did. Bill was a great presentation, and thanks to Semcog, MDOT, and our county representatives. Just as a reminder, if anyone didn't know, so next, on September sixth, we're having a technology committee, basically, community brainstorming session. And I see, I mean, I think one of the goals is a lot of synergies, to bring in funding for something like this, whether it means that we establish traffic management areas with some of the Hawk traffic signals, with MCity. MCity's going to be here, also, the American Center for Mobility is going to be here, establishing a research corridor. I think bringing in projects like this would help bring us some of the funding that we might be able to do something like this. Traffic management areas could leave some of the traffic and congestion, maybe look at alternatives to that. So I think it's a good marriage. So if anybody's interested, you know, in that, I think we can, we can help, both help each other. I think the technology can help us, even like, you know, somebody had mentioned, do we need these people driving up and down the roads, you know? Can we look at it with satellites, using data? So there's a lot of different alternatives we can look at.
Thank you. Commissioner Barone?
They've been brought up a couple times tonight, and, just kind of in passing, they, they, Canton Township, the township-wide road initiative, that was, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, so, for townships within Wayne County, we had fourteen million dollars allocated, for neighborhood subdivision roads. And Canton participated in that, received three million dollars, so, one point five each year, eighty percent, at least, county funding, twenty percent of the association. We had, we're, County Commission invited for a presentation right now, so, we actually, I, a couple weeks ago, around, I think, I believe you were there, for Public Services, and that was one of the things that I at least brought up, and I'm hopeful, and I had all of your ears here, and everybody really to, I'm pushing for a deification of this program. So, the township road initiative, it's a band-aid, you know, it's not going to fix our subdivision road, but it is, but it is something. And the mechanism that's used, I mean, may even be looked at by the board, maybe not a lottery, maybe we're using Pacer, but it's something a little bit more data-driven. But I encourage the board here particularly, and anybody else that really believes that our, I believe Canton Township is completely, and that we are the second-largest township, and we have, if you just look at a map, we have our, we have so many subdivision roads, and these are not green, it's simple, this whole presentation is great, very informative, and I thank you for allowing us to sit here and listen to it. But it really comes down to, there's not enough money to fix our road. So it is a band-aid, and I just wanted to bring it up. I encourage if you have anybody on the commission, or any ties in with executive, or any commission member, please encourage them to support.
Thank you. Go ahead, Diane.
I just want to thank everybody. This is real exciting to see all of, everybody here tonight. And I know I've talked to Joe in the past, and Jim, we got together a few months ago and talked about this, so it's so exciting to have the task force finalized, and thank everybody for stepping up to the plate and willing to take their time out. And it's great, we're going to have a lot of data here, so it's not going to be any cost to any, any of the taxpayers to get this going, and I look forward to what the task force has to show us, hopefully, in the spring. And again, Bill, thank you so much for the presentation. It was fantastic, and thank you all for joining us tonight.
I echo everybody's thanks, so I won't go through all that again, but the one other thing I had on my list that didn't come up, and, because we talked about the developers paving roads when they develop new communities, and also talked about blacktop versus concrete, but the other thing that only came up tangentially was traffic signals. And I'm very interested in the commission taking a look at what we can do with traffic signals. It was mentioned that there's some technology that we have deployed, but what other things can be deployed in our community, who's responsible for doing that? And then going really old-school, left turn signals in our community. That's really important to me. There are still areas in our community that rush hour in the morning, or especially in the evening, just back up a mile in our community. And I'm thinking of Ridge Road now at Ford Road, I'm thinking of Beck Road at Ford Road. And, you know, I used to think that you needed three lanes for a turn signal, but I know that Sheldon and Ford, there's not three lanes and we have a left turn signal. Lots Road, I think the new intersection there, I believe, has left turn signals, and there's still only two lanes there. So I really think, I mean, we've been suffering as a community, not just with bad roads, but with traffic problems. We talked about it on Ford Road, but it's not just Ford Road, although it's, a lot of it is related to Ford Roads. I'd really like the commission to look at that as well. So thanks again.
It sounds like a separate task force.
Uh-huh. It could be a subcommittee, I don't know, but this is not, I mean, we're talking about traffic as well in our community, so.
Summer, I'm going to save you for last, if you don't mind.
Okay, that's fine.
As our board representative for this task force. So, Michael, did you want to make a comment?
The...
Or, I'm sorry. After John, would you like to make a comment? Go ahead, John.
He's before beauty. Wise move. No, just thank everybody for coming out. You know, funding is the problem. Instead of Wayne County saying, "We own the roads, but we won't fix them," I think you should say, "We own the roads, but we don't have the money to fix them." And I think if the money was there, Wayne County would fix the roads. I know I worked with Tom and, because here, and going...
or, 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 or,